Good evening, I'd like to call the Waireka City Council meeting for October 21st to order. The time is 5:30 and we are going to go into closed session. But before I do that, I see that there's no members of the public here. So you're going to skip the public comment section. And item three is closed session. The city council will recess to close session to discuss a public employee employment pursuant to government code section 54957 and the position as city manager. I'd like to thank. Good evening, I'd like to thank you for your patience this evening. I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting for Tuesday, October 21st and. Council member Davis, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge to lead is considered by the city chairman. Stand.
Stand. God. You never can address this friend.
I'd like to make the following report on closed session. The city council went into closed session at 5:30 this evening. We adjourned out of closed session at 6:24 with the following action. The council has authorized the mayor to negotiate with John L. Snapp regarding the city manager position. Will the clerk please take the role?
Good evening, Waireka City Council, please let me know you are present by signifying by saying aye, sorry. Council member Davis.
Here.
Council member Claire.
Here.
Madam Mayor.
Here.
Corey, sorry, council member Middleton.
Present.
Council member McCoy.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the agenda, what are the wishes of the council? Are there any requested changes to the agenda?
Council Middleton, I will make the motion to adopt the city council, the city of Waireka as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by council member Middleton, second by council member Davis to approve the agenda as presented this evening. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 A motion passes unanimously. Public comment. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please address the council as a whole. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. And please limit your remarks to five minutes. Do I have any public comment this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the council. My name is Phil Anzo. I'm a resident of Waireka City and I'm also retired unit chief of Cal Fire Siskiyou. I'd like to ask that the council consider adopting a length of service award for the volunteers of the Waireka Fire Department. This type of award program would honor and recognize volunteer firefighters that have provided 20 years or more dedicated service to the department. I think it'd be a great addition to ensure the recruitment of new volunteer firefighters and also retention of current volunteer firefighters and ensure the continued operation of the fire department as in general. And that's all I have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do I have any other public comment at this time? If not, I will close public comment and go into item nine, the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any council member, any council member wishes to remove an item for discussion. The recommended action is to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Waireka as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Number, item 10, public hearings.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, should we introduce them? Mr. Welch.
Thank you. Is Mr. Welch present with us this evening? Well, the fire, the chief, Chief Lemus, would you please introduce our newest firefighter?
Give me a curve ball there. All right, I'll just talk loud. Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce to you candidate Aiden Welch. Our now, since you've approved him, our latest volunteer for the city of Waireka Fire Department. Presenting his firefighter badge. Trying to get the young guys so they can get used to doing the hard work out there, so glad to have them on board.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Amen.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, which is public hearings. I'm going to read the public hearing protocol. The mayor will describe the purpose of the public hearing. Item two, city staff will provide the staff report. Three, city staff will respond to questions from the city council. Four, the mayor will open the public hearing. Five, the public wanting to comment will come to the podium, provide the city clerk with their name and provide their comments. The mayor will then close the public hearing and the city council will then deliberate and act on the item. So this evening, the planning manager, the master fee schedule update with the recommended action to approve the fee schedule as presented.
Good evening, council members, this is Alia Roka Lesra, your planning manager, bringing you the motion to approve resolution 2025-40, a resolution of the city council of the city of Waireka, adopting an updated comprehensive fee schedule and adopting the finding that the project is statutorily exempt from SEQA. City staff have prepared a master fee schedule update for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. The master fee schedule is a finance planning document that contains all fees associated with applications and licensing of various uses, lots and structures within the city limits of the city of Waireka. The master fee schedule should be adopted with the budget to allow the finance department to accurately predict potential cost savings for departmental applications and processes. I'm going to go to the changes in fees. So we've had some fees with no change. The majority of fees associated with administrative costs such as printing services and statutory fees remain at the same level as the current schedule. These fees are not typically associated with the expenditure of staff time but cover the fixed cost of materials to print. In terms of planning permit fees, the majority of planning related fees have increased 12.5% due to the increase in staff hourly rates. There is no change in the time it takes to assess these permits, but staff hourly rates have increased due to union and contract negotiations approved by city council. Two fees that I want to note are the administrative parcel maps and boundary line adjustments that have decreased 40% in cost as staff are now processing these applications more efficiently with the city surveyor. Next, we'll go to building permit fees. The building fee decrease follows the consumer price index for January 2025, which was negative 0.3%, which means that the 2026 building fees will be lower than last year's. The dog license fees and community, so the dog license fees have followed a set five-year schedule that was previously adopted by council. So we are just continuing to follow that schedule in this fee update. The community center, theater, stage and park fees have not changed for this year. We've found that the fee schedule update is exempt from SEQA. We noticed the public hearing more than 20 days in advance per government code section 6062, part A. Our city staff recommendation is to that city council approve the attached resolution, which adopts the presented comprehensive fee schedule and find the adoption exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And you have a couple attachments, including that resolution and the 2026 master fee schedule. That's the end of my staff report. I'm here for any clarifying questions from the council.
Council member Middleton, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Council member Davis? Questions?
I guess I have a small question. The fees are based on what it costs to the staff to prepare those, is that correct?
So it depends on the type of fee for planning fees, yes, but there are some fees that are based on state requirements and the consumer price index. So some of them fluctuate depending on the consumer price index.
Can I? Ask one more?
Yes, you have the floor.
Those fees go into a special fund or do they go into the general fund?
I'm going to ask our finance director to answer that question.
Depending on what type of fee it is. So for building, that is general fund, so our building permit fees go back into source our building permits. Planning, same, same option. I don't believe any of the fees on there are associated with water and sewer, since we do those through a 218 process. So yes, they do go back into general fund, but usually back against the appropriate department in which the expense was incurred.
Dog license fees? I hear the most about that.
They go back into our animal control budget.
Thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Davis, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Council member McCoy, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Do you want to comment yet or you want me to wait on that till later?
Let's wait on your comments for our preparations.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Is it possible to have any of these fees removed from the fee schedule?
Are there specific fees?
And the reason that I ask is that last year after the fee schedule was adopted, I received some concerns about cottage food businesses. You have to get permits through the county. And the people that reached out to me felt like the home occupation permit was something that was kind of on top of everything and they couldn't see why that was necessary. And at that time, I had talked with the city manager, Mr. Ledbetter, and he said that that was something that could be removed if the council so chose to do that. Is that the correct process?
So my understanding is that there would be two options. The requirement for cottage food businesses to have a home occupation permit is written into the city code, so that would require an update to the code. And that would be done as part of our zoning code update, which is estimated to be done by the middle of next year. The other option, my understanding is that you could set the home occupation permit fee to $0. I'm not sure if that would be specifically for the cottage food business, however, or just home occupation permit fees as a whole. I would need to do more research on that and that would effectively mean that the city would be subsidizing those home occupation permits.
So what is a home occupation permit?
So it's for home-based businesses. Anyone using their home in conjunction with their business. So that could be anywhere from a cottage food operation to we have someone who does the 3D printing at their house and sells it online and that fares.
And what? I'm probably not asking this question right, so please bear with me. What is the purpose of that, that permit? Is that to like give public notice that they have a business out of their home? Or does that provide the city any authority to go in and inspect?
So it is a land use procedure, so just to make sure that the business, there are some businesses that are appropriate for, to be home-based and others that wouldn't due to factors like traffic and noise, for example. So this is how the planning department ensures that there are no public safety impacts or noise impacts or other sorts of land use impacts associated with home-based businesses. Does that answer your question?
It does, and is this an annual fee?
It's a one-time fee.
Okay, it's a one-time fee. Thank you, you've answered my questions. So if the council members have no other questions, I'm going to go ahead at this time and open the public hearing and open it up for public comment at this time.
I'm Marie Autry, I'm from the city of Waireka. Um, so, dog licensing. I had a thing. So base camp's open now and we have crossroads open too, and everybody has dogs. So I'm asking the council to allow our unhoused individuals to be able to license their dogs in the city of Waireka for zero fee. They're not licensed now, so it's not like you're getting any money now. But if you allowed them to license their dogs through the city, then when they're found running amok, instead of taking them to the pound, taking up valuable space, you could return them to say base camp. And, you know, or wherever it says that they're going to be, but probably base camp because that's where the most dogs are. It's just a thought, but instead of taking our valuable space that is at our dog pound, which we don't have, we could just return them to where they belong. And it would be free and because they're not going to pay the fee, you know that, I know that. So just a thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Lorenzo Love, that would also be a way of ensuring the dogs have rabies vaccines. You could require rabies vaccines. And you can make it the fee waiver only for dogs that have been neutered. Reduce the dog population that way.
Jan Osborne, Waireka. I don't have a dog. But I see a lot of dogs around town and I understand that they don't have to wear tags now, the city doesn't even give out tags. So I don't know if they're licensed or not. But I do know that there is an option of community service in lieu of the licensing fees. And I think that would be a great way to go because people who have their dogs, maybe they would and get them licensed and have to perform some community service in order to pay for that license. It might encourage them to take better care of their dog and our community. I see a lot of people who do not follow dog owner etiquette. It's not the dog's fault, but we have a lot of loose dogs in this city. And I think that we should not exempt anyone from having a license. I think we should do more enforcement of that. I don't know how the police can do it because how do they know if a dog is licensed or not? I mean, I see them out at Greenhorn all the time and I have no idea if they're licensed. So if there's an option, and there is, unless I've misread it, you can do community service. So if you don't have money, give your work. Don't get, don't give people things for free, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? As there's no more public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say that the finance committee met about a week ago or so in regards to this master fee schedule. And the finance committee unanimously recommends adopting this fee schedule to the to the Waireka City Council, thank you.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Middleton? Mr. Claire? I would just like to make the comment that I feel better educated about the home occupation permit at this time. I thought that it was an annual fee that people had to pay, but if it's a one-time fee, that makes sense. And in the documentation, in the resolution, I just want to point out that there is a low-income fee waiver for dog licenses as well, so. There's no further discussion? What are the wishes of the council?
Council Middleton, I'll make the reckless city council action, the motion to approve city resolution 2025-40 of the city council of the city of Waireka, adopting an updated comprehensive fee schedule and adopt the finding that the project is statutorily exempt from SEQA.
I'll second the motion. Will the city clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor of approving resolution 2025-40, please signify by saying aye. Council member Davis? Council member McCoy?
Aye.
Council member Middleton? Council member Claire? Council member Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Item 11, city business, this is the assistant city manager. This is the second reading of ordinance number 885, amending titles 5, 9 and 16 of the Waireka Municipal Code to all non-storefront retail medicinal cannabis delivery.
Hello. So this is the third time we've been in front of the city council. The first time was just a presentation on the changes for input. And then our first reading at the last city meeting. We have not made any changes since that last time because we were not directed to. So this is the, the second reading of the ordinance and so I will just kind of leave it at that. And if you have any specific questions, I can answer those for you.
Do any of the council members have questions for our assistant city manager? Thank you, I will open it up for public comment at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, council members and city staff. My name is Alan McGonaghy and I'm the owner and operator of Al's Depot and Emporium, a state licensed cannabis dispensary located in the historic downtown district of Dunsmere. First, I want to sincerely, sincerely thank you for your work on the ordinance 8855 or 885 and your effort to bring clarity, safety and fairness to the cannabis regulation here in Waireka. I was raised here in Siskiyou County all my life. I went to Beville Elementary, Reed High School and later attended College of the Siskies and have never wanted to leave. This community is who made me and who I want to be here for. And like a lot of locals, I've seen a lot of both. I've seen both the challenges and the opportunities that come with living in a small northern California town. That's why I've dedicated my career to building a responsible, responsible, community-focused cannabis business that follows every law and gives back locally. Before opening Al's Depot and Emporium, I worked for other several local licensed dispensaries throughout Siskiyou County, the ones in Mount Shasta, some in Redding and the one in Dunsmere, Blaze One, which at one time held a valid California cannabis retail license. I served as the manager of Blaze One and part of my job was overseeing legal cannabis deliveries to the city of Waireka. These deliveries were fully tracked, verified through the state's track, state metric system and done in compliance, in complete compliance with the Department of Cannabis Control. Not a single issue ever arose. That experience proved that regulated cannabis delivery already works safely in Waireka and it can continue to work, especially when managed by experienced compliant operators who know this community and its values. After years, after years of working in other dispensaries, I took what I learned and opened up Al's Depot and Emporium in the historic downtown district. We went through every legal step, zoning, licensing, inspections, DCC approval, local approvals, and today we operate a fully compliant business with all state and local laws met. We built a small but strong local following over the last 10 years, helped numerous folks with their pain management in Siskiyou County and generated tax revenue. Brought and brought life and commerce back into a, into a historic part of town, all while operating with transparency and respect for our neighbors. That same responsible model can succeed right here in Waireka. The problem with unlicensed THC sales. Meanwhile, several smoke shops in the area are currently selling unlicensed, untested products, Delta 8, Delta 9 and synthetic edibles, completely outside the state's legal framework. These products are not often tested for safety and some are packaged to appeal to minors. When that happens, the city loses oversight, tax revenue and consumer protection. And legitimate, law-abiding businesses are undercut by illegal competition. My friend who works at Behavioral Health asked me about the vapes people are buying in the smoke shops around town and how safe they are or aren't. Within that, I was very concerned. We can fix that by allowing locally licensed storefront operatives who follow the rules to serve customers safely, transparently and locally. Why Waireka should move forward with storefront retail? By allowing regulated storefront cannabis businesses, Waireka would gain local tax revenue to reinvest in community service, community services, job opportunities for local residents, strict ID enforcement and product testing, keeping unsafe products out of our local hands and a stronger downtown business base that brings life and tourism to the city center. Nearby towns like Weed, Mount Shasta, and Dunsmere have already shown that this can be done safely and respectfully. There is no reason why Wyrika can't do the same and benefit even more by doing it right. A responsible path forward. I fully support Wyrika's decision to start with medical non-storefront retail. It's a logical first step. But I encourage the city to also create a clear, fair pathway toward regulated storefront cannabis retail, and at the same time, to enforce unlicensed THC sales that are already happening. We have the framework, we have the experience, and we have the community roots to do this the right way, safely, legally, and in a way that supports Wyrika's economic future. In closing, I want to say thank you for your time. And I want to also say that I'm not just a business owner, I'm a local. I grew up here, I went to school here. I've worked hard to build something that reflects the integrity and creativity and resilience of Siskiyou County. Cannabis isn't something new to Wyrika, it's already here. The question is whether we want it to stay unregulated underground or bring it to, bring it into the light through legal, safe, and community-minded storefronts that everyone can be proud of. Thank you for your time, for your leadership, and for considering this perspective as you move forward with Ordinance 885. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Osborne, Wyrika. The United States of America is the most drug-addicted country in the world. And marijuana is one of the leading drugs. Marijuana is still a Schedule I drug at the federal level. And the Supreme Court has already ruled, back, I think in 2000, early 2000s, in Gonzalez versus Reich, that the federal supersedes the states. One of the council members at the last meeting said he was voting for this ordinance because it was a state law. Well, it's federal law preempts that. Marijuana is a Schedule I drug. It has a high propensity for addiction. And it has no proven medical use. On top of that, I want you to consider the public health and safety and morals too of our community. I read just today, I want to know, how long do you have to wait after using marijuana to drive safely? Six hours. Now I'm thinking if people are using medical marijuana, and it's something, they call it medical or medicinal, are they going to be driving? We're going to have a lot of impaired drivers. Also, they don't have a test yet. That, like a roadside test, a breathalyzer like they do for alcohol. So it's pretty hard to tell if someone's impaired, other than the way they've been driving. You can't prove right instantly that it's marijuana. I know that you are all hell-bent, with the exception of one of you who voted no, on having this, and you're, I don't, I guess you're looking at the profits that might come from it. But I'm seeing the problems that are coming from it. We have homelessness all over our country, and it's increasing. And so is drug use. I urge you to reconsider your approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I will bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Mr. Davis?
I didn't catch the first gentleman's, that spoke's name. Yes. What is it?
Alan McGonaghy.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. I have a couple of thoughts. I've checked with a few folks that, and I say a few, I don't know a lot of them, and that, that have medical thing backgrounds, and they, they were positive about it for people that were terminally ill, hypertension, depression. Medical marijuana has, has a positive effect. So that was one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is I'm not quite ready to bring marijuana to Wyrika, even though it's here, but as a storefront item. And I, and I think that once we get medical marijuana in town, we will have regular businesses. So that's kind of where I am right now.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Middleton?
No questions.
Mr. Claire?
So can I ask Andrew, your city attorney, a question? Confirming, so this is, this is a state requirement. And some kind of address web was brought up, maybe by a public comment, if you don't mind maybe hitting on those points.
Certainly. Given Madam Mayor, members of the council. What is a requirement for the city is to allow a fixed base called the, the storefront non-retail. And that allows for medicinal marijuana only to originate here in town and be delivered in town or elsewhere. And currently, you do have marijuana in town, cannabis in town, in the coming, or licensed facilities coming from other cities. You had one speaker talking about where he operates from. That kind of delivery service is already allowed here. That state law already allows that. This more recent state law that took effect January 1 this year is to require a city to allow a business to then be able to set up shop in your town. In every town, every city in California. So that's what state law says to do. So that's what this grant was applied for. And the, the terms of that grant said to hold public meetings. And so relating to all cannabis uses, that was done. And then what was brought before you was something not to grant all those other types of cannabis uses, but only this one type of cannabis use called the, the storefront non-retail delivery facility. And so that's all that is being permitted by this ordinance. This ordinance also cleans up a series of other chapters where the city has previously said absolutely no uses. Well, going into one area about land use, we also had to go into some other chapters that made the exception for this particular kind of, of land use as well, the, the non-retail storefront. There was a comment made about the Gonzalez-Rich case, comment made about federal law. Yes, there is a fed-state, as we call it, legal issue where federal preemption and, and state laws are going against that. The trend has been, I think we're well over, I don't know the exact number, but we're well in the twenties number of states, I believe it is. Higher than that, where cannabis is allowed at a state level, by state law. And the comment was correct, at a federal level, it's still on the books as a Schedule I substance. Well, of course, we wrote this, but it's also left up to, there was a memo years back written by the Attorney General of the United States at the time that left it up to the discretion of the US Attorney for each state, each district, to, to prosecute. And so that's where the fed-state issue comes in. And so doing what you're doing is not violating federal law. Those days are long gone, in which cities like Berkeley was contacted by DEA, FBI, whomever, on what they were doing, what you're being, what you're considering right now is well within your authority to, to take this land use action and become compliant, more compliant with state law.
So, sorry. So just clarifying, that the ordinance, the thing in front of us today, if it goes through, it does automatically hit a trigger point of opening up a retail store. There will be other steps, if that comes into term for Wyrika at some point. If that comes, a retail thing down the road, if that comes up, or that's something that goes that direction.
Right.
If this ordinance goes through as, as it is, that doesn't automatically trigger that that's going to be the next step or phase, right? If I understand that correctly, there'll be other steps and ordinances, things that have to be done, rules in place, before we can just start doing retail from there. Do I have that understood correctly?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
What we need to be specific about that, if you pass this ordinance tonight, 30 years later, then it's effective. And all it would allow is someone to apply for a permit, get that permit through a process described in here, to operate a, a site where deliveries for medicinal marijuana only could then start and end from here in Wyrika. What you're talking about in, what a comment was made about, this would open the door for others to come in and have recreational use sales. This ordinance does not allow that. And there would need to be another similar ordinance. It would need to have public meetings, and probably it would have to go for the planning commission and go through the adoption, the amendment of the zoning code, the way that needs to be done. And so there would be a lengthy process. What this ordinance also does is it, currently you don't have an ordinance that effectively conports with California law on this issue. And so what this does is it allows you, as a city council, to say, no, this is the zone in which it can happen. These are the regulations at a local level at which it can happen. These are more restrictive hours of operation that you, that is being proposed here. And so you're putting on, you're actually having your local control over where these non-store, or non-retail storefront would be located and how they're going to operate.
Thank you very much. Just my real quick two cents on this, if I can. I've heard everybody in the audience, I've talked to people, and I don't personally have a right, I think, to dictate what somebody gets delivered to their house. If they have a sickness or something, and if they need it, you know, who knows, they get prescriptions or whatever. I don't, I don't feel I have the right to, to set that up. I don't, and I, no disrespect to any business owners here, I'm maybe not to the level of a retail store at this juncture where I'm at. But somebody having a, just a medicinal-based closed thing to start with is kind of, I'm, I'm leaning more towards that. I'm not for the open, which is why I was asking Mr. Jared, the questions of clarification, as we don't just hit a trigger point of going down this path that we're not ready for. It's, let's start here. People need, whether they consider medicine, it's not my choice, or whatever I choose, was somebody's medicine or isn't. To allow them to have that, that's up to them. That's kind of where I'm at with it. I'm not, I know, I know it's not the greatest thing, and, you know, I'm kind of, I don't, I don't like it a lot, but at the same time, I'm trying to be, listen to everybody, but understand that people sometimes use these things for reasons that they need them for, and I don't have a right to dictate if they get those or not. So that's all I have to say on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jared.
I don't have any comments to add past my vote from the previous meeting. So with that, what are the wishes of the council?
Councilperson Middleton, I'll make the motion to waive full reading of the ordinance and approve second reading of Ordinance 885 titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wyrika, California, Adding Chapter 5.30, Cannabis Business Activities to Title V, Business Regulations and Licenses to Regulate Medicinal Cannabis Non-Storefront Retail Businesses, Amending Chapter 16.100, Medical Marijuana Distribution Facilities, Amending Chapter 9 to 5, Medical Marijuana Distribution Facilities, Amending Chapter 9.26, Medical Marijuana Cultivation, Distribution, and Delivery Prohibited, and finding such ordinance exempt from SEQA. And two, direct the city clerk to publish a summary of Ordinance 885, consistent with Government Code Section 3699. And three, the city manager is directed to take all other actions required for adoption and implication of Ordinance 885.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, this is Councilman McCoy, I'll second Councilman Middleton's motion. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember McCoy, to waive the full reading of Ordinance 885 and approve the second reading to direct the city clerk to publish a summary of the ordinance and direct the city manager to take all actions required for adoption and implementation of Ordinance 885. Will the city clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor of approving the second reading of Ordinance 885, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Councilmember Baker?
No.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Let me see, 11B is the Finance Director. And this is the discussion, possible action, approving the resolution, adopting the amended budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, and adopting the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2027.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Members of the community, esteemed staff. Welcome. Do we have that presentation, Cindy?
Thank you, ma'am. First and foremost, I want to take an opportunity to thank Toni Woolman, our staff accountant. She has put in an exceptional amount of work on this as we try to coincide audit and budget at the same time. She has been an outstanding help and definitely could not have gotten this, this far without her. This presentation was made to the Finance Committee as a whole, I believe, on October 12. And it was unanimously, unanimously, decided to bring forward to council for approval. I'm going to go over a couple of just general things about the budget, and then we'll look at some more specific items as we move along. This is actually a redo of the 2526 budget. As you may recall, we passed that budget without knowing whether or not Measure V was going to pass. So we didn't want to count our chickens before they were hatched. So there is some major additions of the Measure V income, as well as the necessary expenses for our fire department. Additionally, we had the originally unforeseen amount for cleanup of Campus Drive. We budgeted about $40,000 to make that work. We came in pretty close. As you can imagine, those things are sometimes out of our control as we start to clean up. Some overall reminders, staff are our most valuable asset. They are our most expensive asset, but without good staff, we do not have good product. And as a city, that's what we're all striving, is to have good product. Other reminders are our four major areas in which we are trying to accomplish. That is my personal favorite, fiscal responsibility. We want to ensure that the city is secure going into the future financially. Our water security, hazard mitigation, which mainly for us focuses Our water security hazard mitigation, which mainly for us focuses on fire and housing. So in this budget, you'll see where we have tried to address those four different areas uh with the different projects that we're trying to get done. Uh, next slide. This is our overall budget. So this covers general fund, streets, water, sewer. Uh, as you can see in twenty-five, twenty-six, our revenues coming in are less than our expenses or yeah, less than our expenses. Which means we have planned usage of our reserves. Uh, some of those reserves plans uh include the completion of the design for Ringy Pool. Uh, we already had determined years prior that we were going to fund that through the sale of some properties. Uh, when we sold those properties in previous years, they go sit in reserves until it's time to use them and now it's time to use them. Uh, same uh for uh we're also going to have some completed fire hall construction documents by the end of twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, next slide, please. So this is our general fund revenues. Uh, we're focusing on the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. Both years are pretty similar uh percentage wise. Uh, we are continuing to be conservative on our sales tax revenue as we've seen a approximate two percent decrease in sales tax revenues over previous years. Uh, our other uh revenue streams, franchise fees, business licenses, we've kept somewhat flat. Uh, just considering that our current economic situation is somewhat unstable and uncertain in my mind. We decided to kind of keep as much things as status quo as possible. Um, this does include our measure V money. Uh, this is my best estimate guess considering we've only collected. Uh, about four to five months worth of data. So we really don't know how that's going to continue to look as we go on into the next year. Um, so we're playing it conservative, uh better to have. Be under conservative on revenue and be pleasantly surprised at the end, in my opinion, if we can make that budget work with that. Uh, both uh fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven are currently budgeted to the good. Uh, not by a lot, uh probably like thousand plus dollars, but we are budgeted to the good. Uh, so as you know, a budget is uh not a magic eight ball. It's our best guess and we monitor it monthly to make sure that we're either hitting goals or we're not um blowing through them. Next slide, please. This is our expenses by department. Uh, the included in this budget is monies uh designated for our long-term financial plan. Which uh goes coincides with our fiscal responsibilities goal. We are currently working with Cameron Weest on getting that plan put together, which would also include a CIP plan. Uh, which is a necessary component of our general plan, which is also included in here, which is part of our housing goal. Uh, also included in here are some uh reserve transfers. So we're planning on putting about six hundred K into reserves in twenty-five, twenty-six. We also have the purchase of the shop smart building uh completion in this twenty-five, twenty-six budget as well. Uh, yeah. We are also including in here an upgrade to our uh what is currently called civic pay. It's our online platform to pay for uh utility bills. Uh, the upgrade will then allow us to collect, to pay for uh. Building permits, dog licenses, business licenses online. If we can encourage more of our customers to do that online, it streamlines it for us on our end and requires less administrative expense. To process those fees. As you can see, our largest portion is our police department. They um and we'll go into theirs a little in a little more detail. Uh, but here's all our other general fund uh expenses. Uh, as you can see, fire is getting larger. Uh, as we will do more detail on that one as well in a slide here in a minute. Next slide. Uh, this is the uh general fund police department. This includes animal control as well and our canine. Uh, it's approximately five million of our general fund budget, which accounts for forty-four percent of our general fund budget. Again, staff is our most important, as you can tell, especially with the police department, that's where the majority of their funding goes. It is very common uh to have wages direct and the indirect costs be the exact same amount of money. So when we get uh ideas of, hey, we'd like to add this personnel, we're only going to pay them sixty thousand a year. We need to bear in mind that that's actually going to end up costing us closer to about one twenty. Uh, that includes workman's comp, pension costs, future pension costs, insurance, workman's comp, all of those. Fun and necessary costs that sometimes we don't see the, because they're not pretty shiny objects, darn it. Next slide, please. This is our fire department. As you can see, again, we have that split between the uh direct wages and the indirect wages. This budget includes three fire personnel, which we currently have one hired. We have one coming on board in the very short week. And then a third should be joining us uh before in a few weeks. So we've done a great job getting out there, recruiting, getting those personnel, getting them on board. Uh, we have already submitted for the safer grant for the addition of three more uh firefighters. This would be a great supplement to our budget. Uh, unfortunately, the federal government is shut down. So I have no idea if we got it or not. Uh, we were supposed to find out September thirtieth and they shut down like October first. So um if and when we get that, uh just for a quick reference, uh the safer grant helps pay for like seventy-five percent of a person firefighter. In the first year and then it tapers down over the next three years with a commitment that we will pay for them for a full five years. So it helps kind of get us our foot in the door as we figure out more and more of what measure V money is going to look like. Where we have funds to move around to make sure that we can have that full staff of six so that they can uh run twenty-four hour shifts. Uh, also included in here is reserve savings uh for our construction money. Um, because we are working with Cameron Weest again uh to help dovetail in the financial, long-term financial plan with. The purchase of that fire hall and what different pieces of funding we need to obtain, grant and construction funds. Uh, whether we're gonna, how we're gonna make it all happen. So it's a good timing with him of getting this plan together so that we can make sure that all those parts work together. Next slide, please. Our enterprise funds. Um, as a reminder, the two eighteen engineered documents that were presented in twenty twenty-three supported a nine point six uh. Increase. Uh, the council decided to pass a six point six. So you will see where we have some reserve usage in order to make some things happen. Uh, we have seen significant increases in operational expense for the water department. Uh, chemicals have gone up, our power bill's gone up uh exponentially. Power is crazy. It's gone up like probably twenty percent. Um, so just trying, we're still working on covering those costs, trying to figure out how we can do upgrades to systems that are. Use less power or they use less chemicals. Uh, we're always trying to look and see what we can do to make that happen. Included in here in each year is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand that we are going to use to upgrade our meters. To cellular endpoint devices, which sounds real fancy. Um, but what it will do is it will allow us to remotely acquire information from your meter usage. And then um report back here directly versus having our meter truck guy have to drive. His truck net near your house to pick up the signal. Uh, this will help us with ensuring our water security by making sure that it is accurate, that we don't, we can catch leaks faster. We can um be more efficient in that manner. Uh, in the next year, uh. We have a hundred and in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'll be putting a hundred and twenty K. Uh, out of reserves. Uh, we're hoping to see that turn around in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, but again, it'll kind of depend on what that two eighteen process comes back. Anything else I'm missing? Oh, um, yeah, we've, we've had a lot of decrease in consumption, so people are saving water, but that also means I'm collecting less money. So that's also a contributing factor to our revenue decrease. Next slide, please. Um, again, just our breakdown, again, staff are most invaluable. I will continue to tout that. Uh, it doesn't work if we don't have people to make it work. Uh. The again increased uh operating supplies, this is just kind of the small breakdown of what we're currently. Uh, using all of those funds for. Next slide. This is our sewer, our wastewater operating budget. Um, again, we had the same uh situation with the two eighteen. Uh, it was recommended to nine point five. Uh, the city council passed a six point three. Uh, we have one major project happening in twenty-five, twenty-six, which is why we are uh taking so much fun, so many funds out of reserves. It is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar wastewater pretreatment program required by the state. The state likes to send us mandates and no funding to make it happen. So this is us being compliant with uh those state requirements. Um, I'm sure Cindy Lynch will have a uh good presentation on all the details of that. I just get told how much it costs. And that we have to do it. Uh, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are thirteen thousand to the good to put back into reserves uh to cover any emergency things that might come up. Next slide, please. Uh, again, just the breakdown. Um, as you can tell, our operations are large. Uh, chemicals, et cetera, those really do kill us. Um, and again, you know, we've got some debt servicing because we were able to pull off some projects previously. So before you today is the resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. Uh, for your consideration and approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Councilmember McCoy, do you have uh any questions?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? What you got?
I don't have any questions either, just some comments later on.
Okay, I'll take comments too. Thanks. I'll um open it up for uh public comment at this time. There's no public comment, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember McCoy, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, this uh this budget, which is a two-year budget. We always uh in Wairika, in the time that I've been on council, we've always done a two-year budget. I know it's a. Something that they have been doing here for probably forty, fifty, sixty years. The state uh basically we're require, I mean, we only requirement is we have maybe perhaps a one-year budget. But I think it's good to look at two years and I want to thank um uh Ms. Aldrich for her work on this. Um, this came before the, again, before the finance committee. Of which uh Mr. Claire and I sit on as two of the five members and um. We highly recommend that this be adopted. Also, we just need to be aware those uh that we need to support our. Council in uh two to three years when this two eighteen comes back around so that we are not continuing to um. Uh, so that we can raise our our two eighteen um water and sewer enough that we are not uh bleeding into the red and and um. On it, but that is for later day. So yes, um, the finance committee does recommend adoption of this two-year budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Middleton?
So um I just want to uh thank Ms. Saltridge um for all of her work, but also. To all the the city staff and I know that there are members of the staff that are here tonight and I just want to say thank you. I know that budgeting is um. A long and arduous and meticulous process and most of the time it's not fun. But we appreciate um the work that you do for us. And my only comment is a comment that I um brought up at agenda review, which is um. I would like to see the city process move um to include um department head presentations on what their priorities. Um, for their um budgets are um that those be heard at the same time as the budget is so. Um, that's, that's my only comment that I have. Um, and with that, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. The city council of the city of Wairika adopting the amended budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six and adopting the budget for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Claire, second by Councilmember Davis to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. Of the Wairika City Council adopting the amended budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six and adopting the budget for fiscal year. Um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Will the Kirk clerk, excuse me, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to take a ten-minute break.
Thank you.
We're back at seven fifty-five and the next item on the agenda is um eleven. See the planning manager accessory dwelling unit fee waiver program. Hello again.
Hello again. So this is Alia Roca Lazra, your planning manager. Before you is a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika establishing a fee waiver program for accessory dwelling units. In support of the sixth cycle housing element. Staff is recommending a fee waiver program for up to ten accessory dwelling unit projects. This program would support the city's sixth cycle housing element. By encouraging affordable housing options like ADUs in Wairika neighborhoods. ADUs are smaller self-contained residential units on the same property as a primary home. They are a key strategy under state housing law and the city's housing element to create more affordable housing. The housing element includes goals to remove barriers to housing development and to increase access to housing in higher resource areas. City staff identified that the average city uh fee for a typical ADU is about seven thousand three hundred dollars. This new program would cover that amount for up to ten projects. Once again, the ADU fee waiver program will waive up to seventy-three hundred dollars in eligible fees for each of the first. To qualifying ADU projects, fee waivers would be granted on a first come, first served basis. Determined by the date a complete application is submitted. To be eligible, ADUs must be located within Wairika city limits, used for residential occupancy for a minimum of thirty days. And meet all zoning, building and safety requirements as applicable. Each applicant may only receive one waiver under the program. Applicants must also submit a signed affidavit confirming eligibility and compliance with the program terms. Staff will promote the program by posting announcement on the city's Facebook page and website. Through mailers and by informing homeowners and contractors of the program during planning pre-application meetings. In terms of general plan consistency, the housing element is a required general plan section, the most recent version being the sixth cycle adopted in twenty twenty-three. Policy H E dash five point one of the housing element directs the city to promote ADU housing development by developing tools, resources. housing development by developing tools, resources, and educational materials to increase awareness and support for these housing types in neighborhoods across the city. Additionally, the housing elements affirmatively furthering Fair Housing or AFFH Program number two B commits the city to removing barriers to housing choices and improve housing affordability and mobility for buy right workforce and affordable housing. In addition to improving access to opportunity by increasing the availability of workforce and affordable housing in high resource areas. The city staff would monitor and compliance through site visits or in response to complaints. If program conditions are violated, the fee waiver may be revoked, and the applicant may be required to repay the waived amount. The program will expire either five years after its effective date or once all ten waivers have been issued, whichever comes first. The staff recommendation tonight is for the council to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash four two, establishing a limited ADU Fee Waiver Program to support affordable housing goals in alignment with the city's housing element. That's the end of my staff report. Are there any clarifying questions?
Cindy, the council members have any questions? Mr. McCoy?
You're on mute.
Mr. McCoy, you're on mute.
I'm sorry about that to everybody. Alia, I think you probably answered this, but I just need to clarify. Must they must live, use it for residential, not less than thirty days. So that means that they can rent it to somebody for thirty or sixty or ninety days, and if that person moves out, they can, can they then rent it again or use it for a family member or something like that? And then what I'm getting, and what I'm getting at, I'll be, I'll be quite honest, is Verbo and Airbnb. You know, short, short term rentals.
Yes, that provision of the thirty day minimum is in order to try to limit or prevent the use of the ADUs that are constructed under this program for short term rental purposes and encouraging longer term rentals or intergenerational family living situations.
Asked and answered. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, do you have any questions?
I guess. ADU can be a loft over a garage or some redevelopment in the basement of your home. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so there's a fee for those also?
Yes, those those would be considered what we call junior ADUs since they're attached and within the footprint of the home, but those would be eligible under this program.
Okay. And and this is ten every year?
No, ten total. So the the program would expire either after five years or until we reach ten, how, ten ADU applications.
I didn't understand it. I'm sorry.
Mr. Claire?
So you may have included this in your staff report, but where where's the funding coming from?
That's a good question. I believe it would come from the general fund.
Thank you. Okay, I will open it up for public comment at this time. There is no public comment, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Mr. McCoy?
As as far as, sorry, I am, I like the program. I I think that it impacts the general fund less than we think it will because it's money, it's not money that we already have in the general fund. Where where we will, we're not going to bill anybody for that if they qualify for that seventy three hundred dollars. So we will be putting out the hours. But in addition to that, we will be getting some back as far as taxes go on what little property tax we do get. The other thing that we do get is if we have somebody moving in, like if it's going to be a grandmother or a mother in law or a father in law or grandfather house, or if it's going to be a long term rental, then we are getting, we're going to garner sales tax from the people that are moving in and and provided they don't live in the city right now. But I also like it this because it does, whether or not we like ADUs because of population density, we do have some rules on them to try and 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 keep that density in check. But it does provide for some housing that I hope will be more moderately priced as far as rentals go than trying to rent, you know, three bedroom, two bath house in Waireka. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, any comments? Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Claire? I just want to thank Mr. McCoy. I think you brought up some really good points. So thank you for bringing that up. I was a little concerned about the possibilities of these becoming short term rentals. But I guess we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it if we need to. So. All right. What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I will make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash forty two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Waireka establishing a fee waiver program for accessory dwelling units in support of the sixth cycle housing element.
Council Middleton, I will second the motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember McCoy, second from Councilmember Middleton, to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash forty two, establishing a fee waiver program for accessory dwelling units in support of the sixth cycle housing element. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty five dash forty two, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Right. Agenda item eleven D, Councilmember Middleton. This is a discussion, possible action regarding the City Council. A discussion of the City Council to possibly open City Hall to the public on Fridays during normal or revised business hours. Take it away.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, as I received several constituents calling that the City Hall is closed on Fridays. The council brought this back, I think, probably two years ago and asked why it was closed on Fridays. And after research, it was supposed to be a temporary closure during certain times with dog permits or the business permits. So it's supposed to be why they could catch up on paperwork and filing those and those applications to get caught up on other work. And as Mr. Ledbetter searched, it was supposed to be temporary. It was never brought back by the previous city manager or the council to reinstate that the City Hall be reopened. We get a directed former city manager Ledbetter to open the City Hall. He did so on a very maybe two month basis, took it upon himself to open City Hall without the direction or consultation of the City Council. He went ahead and did it, and his answer was that they were short staffed, and he did it because of that reason, but it never came back to us. And I've been requested by several constituents that we bring back the City Hall full days, but I also brought back some options just in case that maybe staff or John would have some recommendation on what they would like to see. But I do think it's time that it be open, that we have people coming to City Hall and wanting to do business. They don't want to use the Dropbox. They do stand out on the, you know, we hear that they knock, and then it takes time for them to open up. They said, that's fine, but that's a, you know, we have to sit there, knock, and knock, and knock, or call, and someone comes out. That's not acceptable to me. We're public servants. And the city of Waireka and the citizens pay for the fees and the dues they're here to pay for. So I would like the support of the council to bring back the opening on Fridays, whether of one of the three options I have before you. One would be the eight to five and closing during, and I thought they're at the same time, but John can let me know that I thought the dog permits and the city business license would do at the same time, but I think they're different months. So he'd have to clarify that for us. Or we go to a reduced nine to four? Or we go to a reduced half a day on Fridays from eight AM to twelve PM? That would be my recommendation. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any of the council members have questions for Councilmember Middleton? Mr. McCoy?
No.
Questions?
Of Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
No, I don't have questions.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open this item up for a public comment.
Hello, my name is Juliana Lucchese. I live in the city of Dunsmere. These are my personal comments and do not reflect the opinions of the city of Waireka as a whole. Fridays are essential for my staff members to be able to get their work done. So I'm specifically speaking on community development side. So we have one building technician. We have one planning manager, myself. And it is a significant amount of work to digitize and scan all of our building files and our plan sets that we receive. We have not moved over to a digital plan requirement yet, which we are working on those policies and procedures. But again, with such a limited staff, we're slow to get up on that. So most of our Fridays are spent scanning those building plans, which can be hundreds of pages, especially when we start talking about the large commercial enterprises that we have in town with Pfeiffer Vacuum. Walmart last year had a very large commercial upgrade, the Carnegie Library. But mainly, we use those Fridays as well to do full staff training. So we have done full disaster preparedness training with all of our city staff, which has never happened before until this past year. We also do our sexual harassment, workplace violence training on those Fridays as well. Being able to take those days as a whole to do those trainings is really valuable, not only for us, but for members of the public. If we don't have those Fridays closed to the general public, then we would essentially be cutting people off on other regular days of the week, thus being less consistent. So again, right now, we keep a consistent schedule, which I think has value and should be considered as having value. Additionally, there is a correction. We're not closed Friday. We are available by appointment only. The lobby is just closed. So we do open for individuals who would like to come in. We have repeatedly asked Councilmember Middleton for the names and numbers of those people to contact them to let them know that if they are at the front door and need to get in, they can just give us a call if we didn't see them, and we will open the door and we will process their request, whatever that may be. For example, I did take a note, we did help twelve people last Friday, each of those interactions lasting about eight minutes, which is great. So we do those whenever people are available. Additionally, we do have people who can only meet us on Fridays, in which case they do contact us and we make accommodations for them. So we are open, we are working, we answer the phones, we catch up on other projects. And then personally, I use Fridays to deep work a lot of projects for you. So these are the very complex subject expertise areas. So again, for for Federal Energy Regulation Commission documentation, consultation with other agencies on projects, environmental doc review and drafting. Additionally, I should be writing your general plan and zoning code right now, but we are currently over capacity with projects. And so it takes a lot of deep time of uninterrupted staff hours to do those things. And Fridays are essential for me because I get interrupted less by staff with questions from people at the front desk. So that is my time that I'm able to do that. Additionally, we did find a memo to the City Council in twenty fourteen from Rheta Hogan, who's our previous finance director, that they did actually, in fact, close Fridays starting in twenty fourteen, even prior to COVID. And again, the reason is, is to catch up on other pieces of deep work that we have within the office. This extends to other departments. I won't speak for them on it, but I know for a fact that every other department does a lot of internal administrative work on Fridays that we can't necessarily interrupt every couple of minutes to help someone at the front desk. But again, we schedule them in and we still service them every single time. And I would like to actually point out, we are currently short staffed as well. We are down one staff accountant because our other staff accountant is currently interim HR director, and our HR director is currently interim city manager. So we are still understaffed with a mid level position. We are still open on Fridays by appointment only. We do still service people who come to the door. And we, you know, to my understanding, I believe I've turned away one person who wanted to have a full on planning meeting that I was not prepared to have for them, and we scheduled them for a meeting in the subsequent week. So I I think there is a narrative here that needs to be corrected. We are still doing quite a bit of work on Fridays. Additionally, we facilitate meetings with all of you who come in on Fridays, and we are readily available to answer your technical questions when you're meeting with John, previously Jason. And so we would not normally be able to schedule that with all of you on your Friday meetings if we are open to the general public and fielding questions at the front desk. Additionally, there are other city offices that do close on Fridays. There are some city offices that close on Fridays who do not work on Fridays. City of Weed is an example of a nearby city that does that. Additionally, cities of Dunsmere, City of Mount Chasta, other cities have also adopted similar policies for being closed, at least on Fridays or altering hours so that we're able to process our administrative work. So those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Marriatri. I gotta say, you know, the citizens of Waireka pay to have all of y'all employed. And it really makes us mad, and I've heard from a lot of people, too, that they come to pay their bill and they're closed. Now, lots of them have banged on the door and no one has answered it. Whether they're all busy doing something, I don't know. But I know there's two ladies at the front desk could do all of the work for the people who come to the window. And so opening the door and having it left open, it's only going to involve those two ladies. I don't get the deal here at all. Because when I go to pay my bill or I go to give them paperwork, I would really like to be able to have the door open. I pay for that. That's what my money pays for. And that's what all of the citizens pay for. They elect you to make sure that it's done and done right. Please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Thank you. Before I bring it back to Mr. Elsnab, Ms. Lucchese, I just have a clarification that I need from you. Did you, did you speak tonight as a citizen or as an employee? I wasn't sure.
At the beginning, these are my personal opinions and do not reflect the opinions of the city of Waireka.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Elsnab?
Good evening, council. I do have some comments tonight. Before I start, if I can pass around that memo Ms. Lucchese referenced. This is the memo from two thousand fourteen. And before I comment, I just want to say I do respect Councilmember Middleton's item, although I have to state my position tonight that I do disagree with the recommendations. The council needs to know a couple of things, as the theme of tonight is that our staff are our most important assets to the city. Without them, critical projects don't get completed, essential services are difficult to maintain. They're really the backbone of the organization. These people work hard. They need at least one day a week where they can prioritize their own schedules to increase output. Anyone who has worked the counter knows when you can work without interruption, you can get more work done and focus. Speaking off, speaking on behalf of the entire City Hall staff, I can tell you a hundred percent of my staff, including myself, disagree with altering the current schedule on Friday. We also don't have a single written complaint on file to support the issue. If the council decides to alter the schedule that's been in place for multiple years, I'm telling you, just from a productivity standpoint that I will explain in a second, there will be a negative impact on morale, there will be a negative impact on performance and efficiency. For example, when the city's lobbies closed on Fridays, some of our staff are processing up to thirty three hundred water bills on a monthly basis. They're manually processing payroll for 100 employees, one of the most important jobs in the cities. They're doing comprehensive plan checks that can take three to four hours per, per plan set. There's dog licenses, there's buildings permits, there's business licenses. There's no seasonality to that necessarily. Some of them are on a rolling or annual basis. The city has, as mentioned earlier, one building technician for 7, 800 residents. Fridays are also the only day where we can do staff training, where everyone can participate, and that's including public works, where we can all get in the same building, as our weekly staff meetings for improving communication. I want to remind the council that although the lobby is closed, as Ms. Lucchese mentioned, the phones are still open, appointments are being made with the community, emails are being responded to. We're not just shut down. As your interim city manager and on behalf of staff, I urge you to consider keeping the current schedule the same as is. And basically letting the city manager, as myself, manage the daily operations. And my, so I just want to point out that my recommendation is to keep it exactly the same, just to be very clear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council for discussion. Did you want to go first, Mr. Middleton?
I can go first. I just want to know what how our council handled it before 2014. For one thing, they were open. And so obviously it was open all the time. They're paid to do a job. I know you say they're working, but we're also put, I want to really hit this through here. We work for the public. We were citizens of Puerto Rico. This is why everybody has a job that works in this, like the chambers next, or the building next door and we're sitting here as they elect us to do a job. And to make sure we hold the staff and you, as the area temporary city manager, accountable for having the services provided to them, what they feel they pay for. And so I would urge this council that go with one of the recommendations, whether it be eight to noon, if they think that is going to be too much and that's all they can handle on a Friday, to do eight to noon, I would go with the reduced schedule. But we do need to have the doors open on Fridays and most public are not going to contact you guys. They're going to contact us because they feel they're not heard. They feel that their time is wasted when they file the complaint. They're going to come to the council members for the complaints. That's why you're not hearing from them. They just don't feel like their voice will be heard from you guys because this is something you guys don't want. So I just want to clarify that. I urge the council to go with one of my recommendations and have the lobby open on Fridays at some, some point or whatever, or if anybody has any other modified hours, I would also entertain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing great points on both sides. I know that I meet on Fridays as well as some of the rest of the city council persons, and I do know that there's a lot that goes on there. I do understand that we are one FTE short right now. Hopefully that'll be rectified within the next two to six months, which, which does mean that we have several people in there. City manager is one of them, that is actually doing one and a half to two jobs. I think that, I, I think that, that yes, I think optically it, it looks, we need to have it open. I think that from a, but from a stand, from a work standpoint, like for building permits and things like that, things will not get done. They're going to take longer if we are open a full five days. I do think there might be other, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking, I've looked at other things that I did discuss with Councilman Middleton, other ways to handle this. And so I would like to submit those for another, at another meeting. And then, and, and go ahead with our discussion tonight and then see if we can't come up with another way. This, as my mother and dad used to say, there's more than one way to skin a cat. And, and, and continue this discussion and see if we can't find something that will be good for the public. It will be good for our workload and it will be good for our city.
Thank you.
And I'm open to bring it back if we want to have more discussion and more feedback on it. I'm more than happy, but I just want to encourage the council that we really need to think about opening it back up, whether that might be. And I look forward to Mr. Councilmember McCoy's recommendations as far as anybody else's. But this can't be just know we're going to keep it the way it is because it's not working, in my opinion, and several people I talked to. And I'm not trying to be mean to our staff. I know that they do a great job. They're the backbone of our, our city. I get that. But that's not what I'm hearing from our public at this time. I'm getting a lot of backlash. I'm getting a lot of angry people out there and I'm just being honest. And so we need to make a change.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I kind of think that what we're doing right now is, is good. Mr. Elsnaab talked to his staff. They, they went through it and came up unanimously, according to him, to stay like they are. They felt they got their work done better, got more work done when they had a day, extra day to do it. And the offices, the, excuse me, the foyer is not open. But if you use the phone or you're email someone, they all have email addresses. They can get service person to person. So I, I don't have a problem with what they're doing.
Thank you. And may I ask you a question, Mr. Davis? So have you received complaints from the public?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Claire?
I've been in there, that's my meeting time usually is Fridays. That's why I can make my schedule work. When I have been in there on Fridays, I have seen staff helping. Last Friday I was in there, working on our ad hoc thing and they were working with somebody at the counter. I've heard people on the phones with me personally being in the building. So from what I'm seeing, everything is working fine. I would like also to throw out there that if for some reason our projects go downhill or things go, or things aren't going the path that we're looking at, then we look at things then. But as of how it sits right now, I feel that it's working, it's working okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But, but I think what Mr. McCoy, Mr. Middleton, they want to explore a little bit more. I think that's a good idea. So just.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm just not quite sure where, where I want to, where I want to start. I know from my work experience, having hours that the office is not generally open to the public is so incredibly helpful to get a lot of work done. I, in the time that I've been on council, have only received one inquiry into the office. And that was not necessarily a complaint. It was just somebody wanted me to explain why the office was closed on Fridays. And I had to be honest and say, I'm not really sure why. I, when this discussion first started coming up several, several months ago, or the idea of putting this issue on the agenda, I could see some, some benefit to it. But I went in and asked some specific questions of the, the staff about what was happening on Fridays. And especially with the, the community development and planning, that work is really just intense and it's high volume. So I can see the benefit of being able to be scanning all these projects without being interrupted all the time. So, and I had no idea that staff is processing 3,300 water bills a month. So kudos. That's amazing. And I've also been in the office a lot on Fridays where I've seen people that are at the, at the counter being helped. I've seen people knocking on the doors as well, and staff coming out to assist them. And the comment that you made, Mr. Elsnaab, that there's no complaints on file from members of the public about the office hours is something that I'm really taking into consideration. If we continue with the decision to leave things as is, the one thing that I would recommend is that there be signage that's put on the doors. Because people may not know that they just, they have to knock. And I know that with, I was one, one afternoon when I was in council chambers here, I did have a couple of people come in here wanting to pay something. And I gave them the wrong information because the doors were locked. And I said, well, no, they're closed. And then I found out, well, all they have to do is knock. So I'd like to see some signage go up. And I actually would request, if possible, that that signage go up until a decision is made so that the public is aware of, of what their options are. I think I'm at this point in time leaning towards leaving things as they are. Based on the fact that I know Mr. Middleton has had, has stated that he's had a different experience with people complaining about the hours. I get that. But also as a retired department head, I know the benefits of just having uninterrupted time. And if indeed the lobby is the only thing that's actually closed, I think that if we have signs up that direct people to call or to knock, I'm fine with that at this point in time. But Mr. McCoy, you did bring up that you had some recommendations that you would like to bring to the council?
I, I have them. However, I'm going to tell you right now with what I'm hearing, I am very comfortable with proceeding the way we are and even voting on it tonight. And with the signage you talked about, which I think is a wonder, wonderful, wonderful idea. We might even, you know, once a year, twice a year, slip a little thing into their water bill to say, hey, you know, although we are closed, although the office is closed, you can call us for an appointment or blah, 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 you know, something like that. So I, I would be comfortable with what the Madam Mayor has just, has just put forth tonight. And then, because I can always bring mine back at another time. If it doesn't, you know, if, if at some point in time the council feels that something, you know, as, as a whole, you know, it has a, if we have three members that want to, you know, say, no, I'm not happy with this, then we, we bring it back again. So I mean, like we do with anything. So I would be comfortable with what your proposal is, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable if we do signage and I will be bringing back this matter in six months and the complaints I have received, I will be having them do the write, write-up so that people can see them and read them and also direct them to you as well. Because for some reason, it seems like I'm getting, you know, people saying we're paying a lot, but your lobby can't be open, so they go to Montague to build a house. So that's what I'm hearing, or they're going to another city. So I will direct these people to maybe call you or to do the write-ups because, or do the written complaints in there because I am receiving them. And I've seen these people go and open businesses elsewhere. And that's just a fact. And so I'm fine with the door signage. I will bring this matter back in six months. And I will encourage the people that the signage will be up on Fridays and they can go in and pay their bills that we are elected to make sure they pay their bills and we're asking that for them. I will let them know that signage is open so they can come down to the city hall on Fridays. So that's their only day, because a lot of people, it's their only day to come in and do errands and they don't do online. They don't want to drop it in the Dropbox. And so, but I'm fine with now to just go ahead and change the signage, but I will bring it back in six months.
But yeah, with all due respect, also, Mr. Middleton, you, you have to remember that anybody that's going to be building a house in Montague is not going to go out to Montague. They're going to go, they're going to go to the courthouse to, to file their permits. So because Montague doesn't have, doesn't issue their own permits.
Okay, well, I'm, is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to make a motion that we maintain city hall hours as they currently are with the addition of appropriate signage on the doors regarding Friday lobby hours and how to access the staff.
I'll second that motion.
So I have that motion on the floor made by myself, seconded by Councilmember McCoy. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Sorry, Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
What was the, what was the vote on the motion? What was the count?
It was unanimous.
Thank you. I, I just couldn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Middleton, thank you for bringing this item forward.
Yes.
I appreciate that. So thank you. We'll move on to item F, which is the city manager and staff reports.
We have Ms. Lucchese here tonight with a report.
Good evening. We've been doing quarterly reports for community development. I'll take hazard resilience and code enforcement. Our planning manager will be taking planning and building. So for our hazard resilience programs, our resilience planner, Sarah Chaffey, if you had not had a chance to meet her, she will be out of the office for the next week and a half, but she will be back and I hope you have a chance to do that. She's lovely. Just to remind the general public in the council, Sarah's position is made available by the Jump Start Cycle Two program from the California Office of Emergency Services. So her position is entirely grant funded. I believe we have her for another three years, which is fantastic. Great position so far. We have submitted six grants in 2025 for various hazard resilience and energy preparedness programs. They're small grants from a couple thousand dollars. If you remember, we did get a Pacific Power grant for the emergency generator for, you know, a, a little bit of money. But the largest one we had for quarter three is we submitted a hazard mitigation grant sub-application through CalOES, specifically for home hardening and defensible space programming. So if we are awarded, it would be approximately a little, little over $2 million would be made available for members of the public to essentially home harden their properties throughout the city over a five-year period. We have not heard back from that sub-application and don't predict to hear back for a couple of months on that. It's a very large competitive program. Sarah worked on it for probably about nine weeks straight. So it's, it's kind of a big deal for us to be able to even apply for something like this. We would have never had the capacity without Sarah. Some of her other activities is we have purchased and programmed tablets for public works to use during green waste days to increase quality and quantity of data collected during those. That green waste day is pretty much every Saturday at this point. For members of the general public, you can come and bring green waste that's not treated to the public works yards on Saturdays from nine AM to 1 PM on those specific dates. I be, I believe pretty much it's every weekend, except for the Thanksgiving weekend. We took that off for our public works crew. There is information on our website as well as our social media pages on that offering. And that's through a CAL FIRE grant. We've purchased and programmed public facing TVs. If you have not seen them yet, they're in the city lobby and those run hazard resilience information, upcoming disaster preparedness events, as well as other city programming. That was paid for through the Jump Start grant as well. We're continuing to support CAL FIRE fuels reduction at Greenhorn Park with public relations and mapping promotions of events in the community. If you'll see, we do have a recent posting that we will do some pile burning at Greenhorn. And Sarah is essentially helping organize all of those events. Ongoing participation in Siskiyou County Wild Mitigate, Wildfire Mitigation Group, Prescribed Burn Association, Fire Safe Council, the meeting with the Kuduk tribe, and meeting with CORE and the Resource Conservation District. CORE is a nonprofit that essentially helps with fire preparedness for communities. And then Sarah has been attending pretty much every single Puerto Rico's farmers market to promote disaster preparedness, hazard resilience, as well as engage with members of the general public on a weekly basis. Sarah will be hosting some hazard resilience workshops coming up on mapping areas in city limits and needs of wildfire reduction. She's also working with some of our other stakeholder groups that I named previously on their projects related to this. We'll be developing a work plan for an update to our emergency operations. So most of 2026, Sarah will be working on that EOP plan, which we have not updated, I think, since 2017. So most of 2026, Sarah will be working on that EOP plan, which we have not updated, I think, since 2017. But essentially it's our internal emergency operations plan for when disasters do hit. And then she is continuing to research grants and applications for the emergency generator project and wildfire fuels reduction programming. For code enforcement, we have accepted twenty-eight new cases in quarter three, bringing our total number of open cases to one hundred and thirty-three. We have one code enforcement officer and myself with assistance from Servium by Right, who is our specialist attorney, helping us with code enforcement. People can submit those complaints via C Click Fix email or writing. So those are all recorded cases. And then to this date this year, we've closed ninety-two. So we have a lot going on in code enforcement right now. Our focus for quarter three has been apartments without hot water, pest control and hotels with building and fire code violations. So our priority is always health, safety and welfare. We prioritize code enforcement cases based off of imminent danger to, to people. And so we do prioritize those building conditions before most other things. And then we've initiated several other programs for citywide enforcement based on complaints. So again, we are not a proactive department at this point because we already have one hundred and thirty-three cases reported to us. So these are all based off of reported complaints. So we did a big sweep of dilapidated signage throughout the city, which targets signs for businesses that are no longer in business or in disrepair. Works with them to repair those signs, make sure they look a little bit nicer. Ranji Officer Man has also been going to all of our tobacco retailers and doing very consistent inspections of those retailers. We've dealt with several incidences of the tobacco retailers actually having prohibited cannabis products within their retailer. And then also having flavored nicotine, which is no longer allowed in the state of California. So we've been working through a lot of tobacco retailer inspections and compliance issues with that. And then finally, storage containers, we received a list of approximately twenty-five to twenty-seven storage containers that are not within our industrial area, nor are they permitted. So that is another citywide program we have been working through. And then finally, code enforcement is working on updates to our non-operative vehicle ordinances, which sounds very compelling. There will be an implementation program for this ordinance, once it's brought up to current best practice and legal standard. We haven't updated that non-op vehicle ordinance. I think that one's from like nineteen eighty-four. So again, bringing it up to best standards so we can deal with non-operative vehicles a little bit more efficiently within city limits. I will give Ranji a lot of credit. We finally are working with a towing company to tow abandoned RVs, which is a very difficult issue we've been having. So for members of the public who don't realize that when we have those towed, we request that they be dismantled because they're usually in disrepair. There really aren't a lot of people who do the dismantling. And actually, we've historically had situations where the towing companies towed them and then sold them back to the same individuals and then they ended up on the street again. So we've been working on a process of working with the different towing companies to not do that, which has been a hurdle surprisingly. So that's what we've been working on in hazard resilience and code enforcement. And I'll hand it over to Alia for planning and building.
Alia Roca Lesra, Planning Manager. On the planning side, we've had twenty-six new projects and we've closed twenty-six projects for a nice net zero. In terms of important projects that we're working on or major projects, we have our pain lane development that our assistant city manager, Juliana, is working on. That's in the stage of drafting the development agreement. We're drafting a pro forma to determine costs for the projects and environmental review. We have our North Mountain Apartments project on Deer Creek Way. We're waiting for a site plan application and development plans for that project. We're continuing to work with Great Northern Services on the CDBG California Community Development Block Grant Subsistence Grant Application for those subsistence payments for community members. We're getting ready to apply. The application period opens December first and closes January thirtieth. We're working on implementing several housing element programs, including our advertising, our ADU programs, fair housing resources and drafting an owner occupied rehabilitation program that will be coming to you at a later date. We're working on a state mandated ADU ordinance update and of course, working on reviving the planning commission and the work plan. So quarter four priorities for planning include three ordinance updates, the planning commission ordinance, the ADU ordinance update I mentioned, and the inclusionary housing ordinance that was brought to you a couple of months ago. Continuing to work on the planning commission work plan for the next four quarters, housing element implementation, the CDBG subsistence grant application, fire hall items relevant to planning and as always, private projects. In the building department, we've issued seventy-nine permits in the last three months and we have finalized twenty-seven of those. Just to give you an idea of how busy the department gets, we issued seven permits in July and we jumped to forty-one permits issued in August and thirty-one issued in September for a total project valuation of two million five hundred thousand. Quarter four priorities for the building department include updating our fees in Springbrook, the ones that you approved earlier this evening, focusing on annual building reports and hunkering down in the slower season and focusing on catching up on scanning and internal processes and workflows to make the upcoming building season even more efficient. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, council.
Good evening, Chief Gilman.
It's been a long time since I've been here with stats, so I thought I'd better put some stats out here. We were short-staffed, as everyone knows, and we lost our PIO. So we had a new person taken over and some stats went out on Facebook that were a little bit inaccurate. So we got that all taken care of. And I thought I should come in here and at least update you on the stats so everyone knows. So I ran back to the first of September just because I've missed a couple of meetings of giving stats out. So these are for the last forty-nine days. So it's a little bit more than a month. But the biggest point I want to bring out is I'm really proud of my department. We're very short-staffed, including at the kennels and dispatching and patrol, but our stats are incredible for them. So our total incidents were two thousand six hundred and thirty-five in the forty-nine days. That's up from last year by a little over a hundred. But what's really impressive to me is the officer-initiated activity. This is where the officers go out and they do proactive patrols and they try to stop crimes ahead of time. So in these last forty-nine days, one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine of these incidents were self-initiated by the officers. Last year they did less than a thousand in the same time period. So that's very impressive. We've made two hundred and seventy traffic stops. That's up from last year at the same time period. Our building checks, where we drive around and check your buildings at nighttime to make sure doors are locked and windows aren't broken, are up this year. They're at three hundred and thirty-six for this time period and last year was two hundred and sixty-eight. And we've done one hundred and twenty-two vehicle checks and PED checks and that's up from fifty-eight. So as you can see, the officers are being extremely busy out on the field, which is just amazing. Cases are the same, are actually a little bit down. We had two hundred and twelve cases. Our crime overall is down and I think it's because of the proactiveness of the officers out there. And some other things, arrests are about the same, one hundred and twelve arrests. Our felony arrests are up, or I'm sorry, are down. We had twenty-four in this time period. Last year it was thirty-three. So we've had quite a few less felony cases in Wyrica. And citations are up. We issued one hundred and one citations and last year at this time, we issued twenty-nine. So I just thought they'd be good stats for everyone to hear and the good news is that the proactivity is way up and crime is down.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes reports for the night.
Thank you so much, Mr. Elsnaab. So we'll go to item G, which is mayor councilmembers' reports, statements and requests. Mr. McCoy, I'll start with you.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll keep it quick. I want to, I want to thank the Professional Frisbee Disc Golf Association, which is professional frisbee disc golf, which held a tournament here this weekend. Kevin Gardner and Gary Alfred were in charge of that, putting it together. It is PFDG. It's just like the PGA Professional Golf Association. They did have professional disc golfers here this weekend. It was well-attended. Big tournament, lots of prizes and it was in Greenhorn Park. And Wyrica, the city of Wyrica made that happen and I'm thankful for the city of Wyrica. I was out there for two and a half hours, as I said, well-attended. I walked some of the holes, but it's great. And it's, it's great to be able to have people coming from, they were as far away as Southern California, Nevada, Oregon, Washington to play. And the professional, one of the professional golfers, disc golfers said, this is wonderful. We, we can't wait to come back. Matter of fact, he said, we've never been treated so well. So I, I thank the city for participating in that and I thank Gary Alfred and Kevin Gardner. The green waste days, I'm glad that was mentioned. We, we've got ten of them going on between October fourth and December twentieth. They're 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM down at eight fifty-six North Main, the Public Works Yard. I've talked to people that have already gone down and dropped things off. People are very appreciative of that. So I, I appreciate again the city and I appreciate all of my fellow council members for making this, this happen. And I, I just appreciate everybody in the office for, for getting it done and everybody at Public Works. The, I got just two more things. CalFire and YFD have lifted the no burn days. Jerry, I think Jerry, Chief Lemos has done a good job of getting that out and letting people know. I was in and the city was processing a burn permit for the city. I think that we need to just remind people, whether it's people in the office reminding or whether it's council members when they ask that, you know, they can burn, but they do have to have a permit and there are guidelines for that. And then last but not least, and this doesn't have anything to do with Wyrica, but the police chief talked about the proactivity of our, our, our police force. I'm, I'm very grateful for them. I think we have really, really great police officers and I think we have great leadership there in Lieutenant Dirksen and the chief. Unfortunately sadness creeps into all police departments and a, a smaller police department in Southern California lost an officer this week. It's, it's probably a city of a hundred thousand, but it's still very small. We don't think about this much, but when our officers get out of the car to help somebody, there's always a chance that somebody else isn't going to see them. And a twenty-five-year-old police officer in La Mesa, California, had stopped at a multi-car accident. And, and I'm very familiar with the area, having grown up in that area. She stopped on the interstate, just like our officers sometimes have to make a stop on this interstate for whatever reason or in a mutual assist call. A third car came along and, and hit her and killed her instantly. Our, our police officers, they need our help. They need our prayers and they need us to, all of us to be vigilant drivers, both in town and out of town when they're responding to a call. It, it's not always a call where they're responding because there's violence or something else. It could be responding to help somebody to, for, for an aid, to help a citizen. And that's what happened here. And I know my heart goes out to the whole police department there. And my heart goes out to the family of this twenty-five-year-old officer who was just trying to help people. I know that's not here in Wyrica, but I think we need to, we need to think about how blessed we are with our police department. There's always going to be issues no matter where you live. But I want to, I want to thank the chief and the whole police department and know that you are always in my thoughts and you're always in my prayers. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Well, in the last fire saved council about a month ago and I wasn't here. No, that's okay. One of the interesting things that you mentioned before service, your information officer, gave a report that there were one hundred and twenty-nine lightning fires on one of the national floors at that time. And fourteen even twelve. So I, I thought that's kind of fact. The building fire was mostly on maybe six real stores to one medical center. I think one of that location was last weekend and the county folks in San Antonio burned it. It went right down to the bitter edge now. There must have been some pretty good firefighting going on there. Even though it's a little town, it's Siskiyou County Fire Safety Council, they have a grant and I think we have a link to it. It's about eight or ten million dollars and applying to them for funds to help house harden their property. It's a pretty, you know, it doesn't have to be a large amount, it can be a housing loan. You have to write it up and something to, you know, look at it clearly. But they're, and they have people involved in it. So it's a, it's a good program. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Claire?
I want to thank Councilmember McCoy for his comments. They're much appreciated. I also wanted to thank city of Fort Jones for having us for the Lola event. Councilmember Middleton, Baker, Mayor Baker and I attended. I think it was last week and week before. Can't keep up. I want to thank Fort Jones for having us. It was really nice. Five Mary's was excellent. So other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some notes here that I've been scribbling throughout the meeting and now I'm going, I can't even read them. But first of all, I would like to thank all the staff members that gave us reports tonight. I appreciate the responsiveness. I had asked for specifically the building stats, building department stats. So I just really appreciate that. Chief Gilman, I always appreciate your reports. And Ms. Lucasey, looks like she's gone, but I appreciated her report tonight. I thought it was really informative. Let me see. I loved the homecoming parade. I think it was two weeks ago was homecoming. It was pouring down rain and especially the marching band, they, they were troopers. They were just marching right along. And I appreciate the city staff that made that happen, the police department, Public Works. So thank you very much. That's always enjoyable. I also, as Councilmember Claire mentioned, attended the Lola meeting. We've also had a code of conduct ad hoc committee meeting. I'm continuing to have my Friday chamber hour between 2:30 and 3:30 here. And the last thing that I, that I have is I was very intrigued by Phil Anzo's comments about a length of service award for long-term firefighters. And I believe that that is a state program. But I'm actually interested in looking into that a little bit further. So I will be bringing an item forward. Probably next meeting, we're just asking the council if this is something we want to, we want to look into. So I think that that is about it for me as well. So it's eight fifty-seven and I will adjourn the meeting.